Today is Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. I call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Zarnik?
Here.
Trustee Feiter?
Here.
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Listner? Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
We do have a quorum tonight. Trustee Prochnow had to go to a wake service tonight, so our prayers go out to her friend. With that said, we have no invocation, but we will do the pledge allegiance. If anyone would please stand. Flags to my right. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. What doesn't work?
None of our TVs are on.
Nancy's working?
Mine's not, and Jeff's not.
Well, I turned mine on, but I'm not getting anything.
Pat, you don't speak.
No, no, it's not the microphone thing.
But Nancy's is on.
Oh, she means the TV.
Yeah, the monitor?
She says there's a problem.
It's on yours, not working.
No.
Well, I turned it on, it just doesn't show me anything.
We have another technical issue here, second folks, so bear with us. The remote better work, that's all I care about. Yes, the remote works, that's all counts. Okay. We'll go ahead and get started, there's not much to see. We're not going to show any presentations on there today, so we should be fine. We need the approval of the minutes first of June 16th, 2020.
I move you to approve the minutes of June 16th, 2020, and dispense with the meeting.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Zarnik, a second by trustee Listner. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show and ask approval. We now need approval of the minutes of June 22nd, 2020.
I move we approve the minutes of June 22nd, 2020, and dispense with the meeting.
A reading.
We have motion by trustee Zarnik, a second by trustee Listner. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show, you may ask approval. Trustee Schmitty, he seems so... We should have had you-
That's okay, don't worry about it.
Okay. Move on now to the mayor and board of trustees report tonight. Now, it's only been three weeks since the last meeting, so luckily it's cut down my length by a third, so that's a better, that's a good start. First off, back on June 18th, we did a ribbon cutting at the Bussy Woods for one of our new bike crossovers. This one's at Northwest Point. We have one at Oakton, one Northwest Point. We had Representative Moilen who got us $450,000 for that project. And we had our county commissioner, Kevin Morrison, there. And we were able to cut the ribbons, open up that new access, which I know is very utilized by the community. And I appreciate Representative Moilen helping us, as he always does. And that went well. June 22nd, of course, we had a special meeting I'll be talking about soon, about the Makers Wanted sponsoring the American Dream with a national sports team coming up for the Olympics. And then, one thing I do want to announce, on August 1st, Saturday, August 1st, we will be having our coffee with the board. I know we had skipped the one back in May, but we will do August 1st. We'll be down in Meeting Room E, there'll be signs down there. And we'll either keep social distancing set up, or please bring a mask. If you can't be six feet apart, please bring a mask. You need to wear a mask. We don't get more than 50 people, so we meet the governor's guidelines, so we should be good. And they're always well attended, and we look forward to getting a meeting back with the public once again. Next, I'd like to talk about the Public Works. Kobe, your guys did an absolute phenomenal job getting those American flags out up and down Beasterfield Road, from the Village Hall, all the way down to Meacham Road. They did a great job, got some on Wellington there. And I had a lot of people, "Mayor, where did those flags come from? Mayor, who put those flags up? Mayor, why are those flags ...?" So, they were very appreciative of it. With all the turmoil I think going on in this world today, it's nice to see that out there showing support for the community, the country. So, Kobe, tell you guys thank you for the work. I know it's a lot of work to put them up, there's a lot of flags to put up. And the community appreciates it and thanks it, Kobe. So, good job. To everyone, Kobe, Chief Walsh, Chief Michael. As you know, our last board meeting in June, we talked about a gentleman, I can't call him Mr. Con, I'm just going to call him Liar Con, because as we've proven, he was a liar, how he tried to defame our police officers in our community. And he was going to put on this massive rally and protest, and of course, no one showed up. Not one person. I want to thank our department heads to pass on to our guys, who gave up their Father's Day. A lot of gentlemen and women, but gentlemen obviously for Father's Day, gave up Father's Day to be here in the village. We thank them for doing that. Chuck and I, matter of fact, I spent the day there too. I figure if they're going to give up theirs, I'm going to stand with them. And I know, I think, three of the guys, they had children less than one years old. That would have been their first Father's Day with a newborn. And I feel bad for them, that they did it. But, our guys and ladies showed up, they're there to serve and help, and we appreciate it. And we see what kind of person Mr. Liar Con is. So, you know, I give our guys again, thank you for giving up the time. Appreciate, please pass the word on, because Public Works was there. Said, I hope they had to, the fire department had extra ammo, everything set. And an awful lot of our policemen were there. So, Chief Walsh, Chief Michael, and Mr. Kobe, thank, let you guys know how much we appreciate them helping out the community. Some good news, real good news. Everyone knows the new property tax bills came. We were talking a little bit beforehand. We cannot, no one can make out heads or tails, what this new county assessor's doing. Some people, the property tax went down $400 or $500. Some people, the property tax went up $400 or $500. Same model home, four doors down from each other, makes no sense. They didn't appeal, no one can figure out what's going on. We had the unfortunate thing that one of our businesses, Made USA Today and Crane Chicago Business, is one of the biggest tax increases around. Why? Who knows? There's other buildings just like that building, they didn't go up at all. So, I know everyone's frustrated, we're frustrated, it happens. But, there is good news out of it. For close to the 20th year, I think Ray and I were talking earlier, I think close to the 20th year, Elk Grove Village has, once again, the lowest combined property tax rate in all Northwest Cook County. I'll say it again. We have the lowest combined property tax rate in all Northwest Cook County. Am I correct, Ms. Trump, our finance director? That is correct. Mount Prospect is still second, they were second last year, still second. Orange Tonight's third, and Schaumburg is fourth. So, again, you should be very proud that you're living in the lowest property tax rate in all Northwest Cook County. We're very proud of it, and proud of how the village handles taxes. Again, as they've done for a long time, our school districts account for 66% of your property tax bill. So, two out of every $3 you pay goes to the schools. Matter of fact, our grade schools, $1 out of every 30. 1/30 of your property tax go to the grade schools. 28% goes to the high school. 5% goes to Harper College. So, again, that's the biggest part. The village, village-wide, is around 9% of your property tax bill. So, the police, the fire, Public Works, all the stuff we do, bringing all the utilities to this village, serving the people, we're less than, we're about 9% of the property tax bill. Park District's about 8%, Library's about 4%. So, you know, we do a lot of good for what we collect. You get a lot of bank for the buck in the village. But again, at least be proud that we do have the lowest property tax in all of Northwest Cook County. And remember this, the village, we tax by dollar amount. We don't ride waves up and down, and like that, we tax by dollar amount. And 12th or 13th year, Ray, we haven't touched the general fund. Do you know which one? 12 years, this village board has not touched the general prop tax fund. Pensions is state mandated, state controlled. But when it comes to what we control for spending, we fell the line on it. And maybe that's one of the reasons why we have such good low property tax rates here in the community. So, we're very proud of it, the community can be proud. We work hard, and we'll continue to work hard to keep everything low for the community. As far as village is doing, village is doing very well. To this date, knock on wood. Not one village employee has gotten COVID-19, or coronavirus. That's because our management team, all the department heads, Ray Romo, and all the rest, we're very ahead of the curve on making sure we are careful with our employees, protecting them, their well-being. It's important to make sure we have our firemen out there for us, our policemen out there, our Public Works guys, our staff. We want to be there to serve you, and we've done very well. With that said, we are now in Governor Pritzker's Phase Four, the five phases. Phase Four is good, because we now have groups up to 50 people. Restaurants, as you know, are open with distancing. Our stores are open, most, almost every business is open. We're doing very well. And we got to keep staying vigilant, you know, keep doing the right thing with masks, social distancing. My opinion, I think social distancing is more important than even a mask. You keep away, it helps preserve things. And because we're doing so well, we have good news too. Starting now, forward, the Forest Reserve is opening their parking lots. So, we were not always a total agreement with the Forest Reserve. How do you have the woods open without parking for people? And because that put a pretty big burden on the village, and we worked through it. The chief, police chief, and Kobe's guys did a great job. Where we set up, where we have parking for residents, permits required. And then, as far as as far as gas coming, all that, they could get their access, but outsiders could not. And it worked well. We have, we did establish a towing requirement, we could tow cars. And all this time, I believe we towed zero cars. So, people were doing the right thing, they followed the rules, we got by. But starting now, especially for this Friday, you can park in Bussy Woods Forest Reserve parking lots. We'll be back to normal, and we're glad that all worked out. And the Forest Reserve's been working very well with the village. We did incur some extra expenses, and we appreciate partnering with the Forest Reserve on addressing our concerns. A little bad news, I know last time we talked about Jack Clay's passing. We had another icon in the community pass away just recently, and that was Jim Fay. And Sam, I know you worked with Jim as superintendent. Jim Fay was a teacher. He was a principal at Grove Junior High School for a while. And he was superintendent of District 59, our grade school on the east side of the village, for 15 years. I grew up next door to Jim Fay. I grew up with his kids, he had six kids. Tommy was probably close to my age, we all grew up together. And Jim did a phenomenal job. People that have been around, us old timers, can remember 59 was going through some real upheaval back in the late 70s and 80s. And Jim's the one that came in, got the finances straightened out in the district, and closed schools. Jim was in charge of the biggest close, school closings, I think in the district, almost in the state. That was back when we went through that big reduction of students, because the baby boomers were all growing up, not many kids left. And I'm not sure, Sam, you're on the board, must have closed at least a half a dozen schools.
Well, actually, I got in on right after that, but-
A lot of schools. We used to have two junior highs, Grove Junior High and Lively. Lively closed, and Omar Copkins closed. Clifford School closed.
Brantwood?
Brantwood, I mean, a lot of schools closed down. And that's just Elk Grove. And he handled it well, got the finances on solid footing that they still are today. And he did a great job, and Jim will never be forgotten. And he's going to be long missed, and a condolences go out to his family on that. Our road projects are moving forward. Oh, just a little bit about Jim, real quick. Jim was a real good college basketball player. Matter of fact, he was drafted by the New York Knicks to play basketball for him. And he was something, and I remember as a kid, watching him play basketball, and still being able to shoot. And we played at Grove Junior High when he was principal there. And he was a good athlete, he was a phenomenal athlete, so. Now, as far as projects go, our road projects are moving along very well. I know it's hot, but that's good, because that means no rain delays, and they keep working. If anyone's driven down Rollin' Road in the past couple of weeks, does that look phenomenal? With all the landscape we did down the middle islands, and we worked down the street a little bit? Did a phenomenal job. And we learned a lesson from years ago, we water those plants, they've got a system in there for watering. We didn't do that originally on some of our islands, and we learned from that. So, but yeah, it looks very nice. And the importance of that, people say, "Well, why'd you do that, Mayor? Why would the board want to do that?" Because that is one of the big entryway points to Elk Grove Village. A lot of people come from Schaumburg area, a lot of people come from DuPage County area, down Rollin' Road. A lot of people get off the expressway there, and go to Schaumburg and other points, or go through that area to the DuPage County area. That's our first vision of Elk Grove to these people. And we always believe in the old saying, curb appeal. Your first impression is the most important impression. That's why we did it. Just like what we did over there on, by the hospital, we put that water fountain feature in. You know, that hospital has hundreds of thousands of people every year going there. Most people are not from Elk Grove. Their first vision, when they get off the expressway going on Beasterfield toward the hospital, is that intersection with that beautiful water feature. What a great first impression to them. Same things we do with our new signage that we did over there at Orange Tonight's Road and the tollway. We did over there at Devon and the tollway. We want to make sure people get the right impression of what kind of community we have. And that's probably one of the reasons why we are doing so well as a community. Even during this COVID virus, we're doing very well. Our business park is chum along, churn along, and all the rest, we're doing well. And that's just another example. So, we're glad that got done, along with all the other projects going on, and it's a nice welcome and feature to the village. I talked real briefly before, I'll go update real quickly. The Makers Wanted sponsorship. Remember, we announced back on June 22nd. We had done the Makers Wanted Bahamas Bowl, looking to get our brand awareness out there again. We have now off, are now going to partner with one of the national teams that are going to be competing in the Olympics with the Makers Wanted program sponsoring that team. And the outcome, the reaching out has been unbelievable. Who have reached out to us? Almost every team, archery, fencing, softball, taekwondo, triathlon, water polo, weightlifting, diving, judo, track and field, wrestling, just to name some of the teams that have been reaching out to us and talking to us about the sponsorship. And so, what's going to be happening again is this. A week from today, on July 14th, all the teams have to have their videotapes into us explaining why we should sponsor and partner with them going forward to the Olympics. So, they all should be turned into the village through forefront by next Tuesday, the 14th. Then, on Thursday, July 16th, at 6:30 PM, right here in the council chambers, and it's going to be shown live on Channel 6. So, we got to keep social distancing and all the rest. So, folks at home, just watch on Channel 6, you'll probably get a better view there. We will be playing all the tapes that evening. And then, the board, not that night, but the board will then review them. And then, we will come up with a decision for the next week of which team we're going to partner with in sponsoring for the upcoming Olympics. So, we're excited about that. We think it's going to be very good for the village. A matter of fact, after we did our announcement back on July 20, or June 22nd, just like what happened with the Bahamas Bowl, our announcement was in the USA Today, the New York Times, the Washington Post. Now, our first announcement with the Bahamas Bowl, we were in the biggest newspaper in India, which we were again in the New Delhi Times. Then, the second announcement with the lost fueling station coming, we're in Japan, China Post, I believe it's called, the biggest newspaper in China. That was the second time. This time, we hit the double header. We're in both the New Delhi and the Chinese newspaper on the first announcement. So, literally billions, with a B, of people read about Elk Grove again. Elk Grove being a proactive community. Elk Grove being a business-minded community. Elk Grove partnering with the American-made athletes to partner with the American-made town, who's the maker of American-made products. It's a perfect marriage. And we have partnered again, and we're going to show again that Elk Grove is the exceptional place to come to. Elk Grove is a place you want to be for business. And more importantly, Elk Grove is a place that stands behind American athletes as they compete against the world, as our businesses compete against the world businesses every single day. So, we're excited about that, we're looking forward to it. And again, that will be on Thursday, June 16th. We will have, I'm sorry, July 16th, we will have the video shown. And the week of July 20th, we will announce the team that we will partner with as we go forward. And a little bit of trivia for the village. Believe it or not, we have a gentleman who is an elected official on one of our local boards, who was an alternate for the 1960 Olympics. He is one match away from being at the Olympics. He is in the U.S. Hall of Fame for that sport. And that would be Jim Cogan. Jim is a library trustee, and he is one of the premier judo athletes of the world during his prime time in that sport. And I never knew that, but I found out, because Jim gave me a call, because of course, the U.S. judo team has reached out to try to get our sponsorship. And Jim was kind of talking a little bit, and that's how I found out about it. So, Tiara, who is the library board president, I forgot to tell him the other day that he's got to, better be careful when he debates, or has a deep discussion like trustee Frankie and I have sometimes. You never know, trustee Frankie, I may be a judo guy on you all of a sudden.
Or I may be.
You could be, that's right.
I watch TV.
So, yeah, we'll see what happens, and, but I thought that was kind of ironic. And yes, I'll tell everyone now, wrestling does not have a leg up on all the other sports for our sponsorship. It may have two legs, but not one leg up, so I just want to make sure everyone knows that. You know, a lot is going on still. It seems like it may be calming down a little bit here in the community, and in the country, hopefully. But I want to talk a little bit about some things we've been receiving here about our police department here in Elk Grove. And it makes you feel good, it actually makes you feel very proud. We've been talking to some nice young ladies in the community who are looking to- You know, people don't realize all we do here in Elk Grove sometimes. You know, and all we do when it comes to like diversity issues. And, you know, embracing different cultures, different religions, and all that stuff. And we are working with these young ladies and our groups here in Elk Grove. You know, we may be, they have to do a better job getting the word out. And that's something we are going to strive to do. And we're looking forward to working with these young ladies and the groups out there, the church groups, and all the rest. The schools, and if we can move forward, the character coalition and all that, to go on that. But, one thing I can tell you for sure, and I talked about this a little bit last week when we were talking about the Liar Con guy. Our police department is absolutely phenomenal, what they do. And let me give you some examples that just came out that I like to go through. Our, the police department in 2019- Hang on, I gotta get my numbers, I want to make sure I get these numbers exactly right. They're on one of my pages here, bear with me, I apologize. In 2019, here it is. And we do this because I told you last week, or last meeting, our police department is Kalia certified, which is the highest certification chief, I'm sorry, trustee Schmidt, now, former chief Schmidt, was one of the driving force of getting us done with the Kalia. It's one of the highest designations you can get for a police department. 3% of the whole country's police departments have it, and why? But each year, we have to give our numbers out and all of that. And let me kind of give you an example. In 2019, our police department had what they call encounters. That is encountering with another person, whether it's a traffic stop, seeing him on the street, a police call, anything like that. Our police department had over 31,000 interactions with people. Think about that, over 31,000 interactions with them. In that 31,000 interactions, there is 20 times, 20 times deemed that use of force was involved. Now, remember, that's 20 times out of 31,000, that's .0006 tenths of a percent. Now, what were those 20 times? Five times, an officer had to pull his taser, but did not discharge it, wasn't used. But he pulled it. Even though the officer didn't touch the person, didn't use a taser, it's still considered a use of force, and counts as an action, any use of force. So, officer pulled the taser, never discharged it, put it back. Five times, the officer pulled the taser and discharged it. Five times out of 31,000 interactions. One time, one time last year, I'll say it again. One time last year, in the entire year, out of 31,000 interactions over, an officer pulled his weapon out. He did not fire his weapon, but he took it out of his holster, one time. Out of the remaining nine use of force, eight of them was where an officer basically put his arm on the person's shoulder. Example what that was. If an officer is handcuffing a person, and the person he's handcuffing, obviously, has his back to the officer, if that gentleman should just turn to say something to the officer, or whatever, if that officer just instantly puts his hand on his shoulder, say, you know, "Turn around, let me finish cuffing you", that is considered a use of force. Just putting his hand on his shoulder is considered a use of force. Nine, eight out of those nine times. So, in other words, out of all the interactions we've had, that's what happened. Now, what does that tell you? First off, it tells you that in Elk Grove, our officers know how to work with people in a one-on-one, in a good way. I read last week about the article, or the letter we got from that gentleman, where we had a murder here in our community, which doesn't happen very often, been years since we had one. Where we had a murder in our community, and the gentleman, the business owner, where it occurred at, wanted to thank our police for what unbelievable job they did. But again, he said in that letter, "Your police are well-trained to work", as he said, many of his employees, English is a second language. And officers did a phenomenal job interacting with these people. And that gives you an example, these numbers, these are the facts, these are numbers, all documented. Remember, we have cameras off our cars, so when things are going on, they're going, the microphone, everything, they see. That's all we had in this community. They do a phenomenal job when it comes to that. And I think it's important for people to see that, because they don't realize, they see what they see on TV, and they think that's happening everywhere. And I told you last time, the local police in small towns are not the same as what you see in big cities. We're not. Big cities have their own issues, own problems. We don't have that here in Elk Grove Village. Most of our neighbors don't have it, Schaumburg, Hawthorne Estates, Orange Night- We don't. That's not how our towns are built. We work well together, we interact well together, and that's unbelievable. But I thought that was important, that you could see the statistics, what go on. But even more important was this. There's some letters we got, these are letters that just come to my office at different times. A gentleman writes, "Dear Mayor Johnson, I wish to thank you and the Board of Trustees for the $200 credit to me." That was the water credit we gave everybody, we're still getting a lot of thank you's on that. "I wish to say thank you as well for allowing me to be part of the Elk Grove Village community. I have lived in our city for 15 years, and I'm very glad I do. I have not suffered any discrimination, racism, prejudice, racial profile, or any type of harassment by any government officials, and I am a so-called minority. Thank you again, Abel Boulonas." We had another one, and I won't go and give out the name of this, because there was a death involved. A brother of someone passed away, and had to reach out to the police for assistance when they went to the house. And they sent a beautiful letter to the community, to the police chief, and shared with the mayor and the board. He writes, "In this time of unrest and villainization of the police, it is important that we express our sincere thanks to your officers. From the first phone call to the end, as we were waiting for the funeral home to come and receive my brother from his home, two of your officers, including Officer Sullivan, my apologies for not knowing the other officers' names, stayed until we felt secure and calm. They were very kind during this little sister's hysterics and ranting to let me see my brother. They gave us words of comfort and support. This is greatly appreciated, and I have thought of them often since that day, just over a week ago. Any chance I get to tell the story of when my brother was distressed, I called the police. When my brother did not answer the door, the police gained entry to his home so the EMS could attempt to save his life. And the police stayed and explained everything, and comforted my family during one of the darkest days of our lives. From the bottom of our hearts, we thank your officers." From the bottom of our hearts, we thank your officers for all the efforts. Please stay safe. That's just some of the kind of stuff we get about our police officers here in Elk Grove. And I've said this before, and I will say it again and again, and this comes from the entire Board of Trustees and I'm sure this entire community. In Elk Grove, we will never, ever disband our police department. We will never, ever defund our police department. And as I said before, I'll say again today, on May first, every single one of our officers got a raise and is a well-deserved raise from our police officer, for our police officers. So on behalf of the community, we thank officers for the job they do all the time. They continue to do it to this very day and they will continue to do it forever. We expect nothing less and we'll do, we deserve nothing less. And from the people we have in our police department, they are more than happy to give us nothing but the best. And we also thank our fire department for the phenomenal job, Public Works, ready the administration and staff. We truly have the exceptional community, we have exceptional staff, and we thank them for everything they do. So thank you. Um, just two more things quickly here. We are celebrating our two-year anniversary of the Elk Grove Cares Program. The Elk Grove Cares Program number was our groundbreaking program we announced two years ago to help fight the disease of addiction. You thought the pandemic's bad, it's nothing compared to the disease of addiction. And something that we are proud to keep working on. Matter of fact, today, we're very excited to announce that we received another one hundred and one thousand five hundred dollar grant from the State of Illinois program. That grant goes on top of other ones we've received from them, now totaling close to a quarter of a million dollars. And that money is utilized for treatment of people that come for help to Elk Grove. If they don't have insurance, this money helps pay for their treatment. We don't want anybody to stay away from trying to seek out help for their addiction. If you don't have money, we will pay for it. This grant helps us. To this date, we have gotten over a million and a half dollars in grants from different government agencies to help this program. And it's doing phenomenal. We have helped fifty-five people to this day. And the fifty-five people, um, some have relapsed, it's going to happen, but quite a few are doing quite well. Matter of fact, uh Mike Espari, Deputy Chief Espari, I know keeps in touch with a young lady that's in Florida. I think she's been a year now, doing well, and she still keeps in touch with him, letting him know she's clean, doing well, job, life on track, and that's phenomenal. I think the one woman that was alcohol problem is going to be almost two years, I think, this August. She's still clean. So and it's not just opioids, alcohol, that's a big problem in this country too. So it's going well. Uh what I'm really proud about is this board set up a four hundred and, we put up five hundred thousand dollars back two years ago. Eighty thousand we took away right away to utilize for a village health program. So we had four hundred and twenty thousand dollars we put in this program, two years ago, this last month. Today, we have over two hundred and seventy-five thousand of those dollars still available to be used. That means we were able to help all these people, all this program for two years. And we were told by some people, I think it was the Lexing Brothers told us, Mayor, that money be gone in six months. It wasn't gone because our guys did a phenomenal job getting grants and help from other avenues for funding assistance. That's why we still have over two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in that program. So we utilized what, about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to this point. And we've helped people, we've gotten the word out, and we're making a difference. That we should be very proud of. And what a different attitude everyone has in Elk Grove. We don't shy away from people with the disease of addiction anymore. Just like we don't shy away from people with heart disease or cancer. We're there to help them, the same as we help someone with cancer or heart disease. We're going to help them beat this disease. We're making a difference in Elk Grove and we're going to continue to do that. And I'm very proud of how well we're doing with that. The Elk Grove Tech Park is doing very well. It's now seventy-eight percent filled. Seventy-eight percent of that big tech park is filled. If you know, Microsoft's building, gonna build on the one side, and keep your eyes open on that, that's all I'm going to say on that. And the other side, buildings are filling up. We just now had a Japanese company come in. Got Brochi, the German company, we have, was it T5, right? T5, building that one for their tech, or their data center. And to show how it's working, we had submitted to the um, um Mary Jo Pie's Department the other day. There's that strip shopping center across the street from the tech park grant or opening, main entrance right there on Higgins. They're coming in, they're going to completely redo their building. New facades, new upgrades, completely redo it. Why? Just like Lou Malinati's, just like Fuller's Car Wash, they want to look their best for the tech park that's across the street from them. That tech park is like a pebble in water. It just dropped in and it's slowly rippling out and making impact in this whole community. So we're excited about that and that's doing very well. Last but not least, Chief Michael, this is for you and your guys. I've already had talked to Kobe and his guys, I talked to Chuck Walsh and his guys, I'm now talking to you, Chief Michael. The town clown is back on the Facebook site, talking about our numbers are low on COVID cases in Elk Grove because we don't want to use our ambulance to pick up patients because then we have to spend time sanitizing the ambulance. So um as anyone knows with a brain, uh that's the farthest from the truth. Our firemen put their lives at risk every day, picking up people every day. They have tested positive with COVID or have COVID, they go out and they help them, they pick them up, they transport them. So again, the town clown has no clue what he's talking about. He offended Kobe's people for putting out unsafe cars for policemen to drive. He approves our police officer's racial profiling, which I think everything's been proven wrong. And anyone that follows Facebook knows who the town clown is. In my opinion, this man needs a lot of help, a lot of help. And maybe Elk Grove Cares Program could help him, I don't know. But in my opinion, I hope he gets it. He really needs it. So Chief Michael, let your guys know on behalf of this village, we appreciate what they do. We know they would never do anything to put anybody at risk. They do their job every day, they risk their life every day. You let them know, we appreciate it, we thank them, and we say God bless them for what they do for this village. Thank you. And with that said, that concludes the mayor's report. Not so bad, it's getting better. Mr. Nigwakker?
Who said it was better?
Huh? Nancy did.
No, she didn't.
I'm sorry, the deputy mayor did. Oh, see, that's better, see?
Yeah, hold the job.
With that said, we move on to trustee's report. Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
Sure, and I'm going to talk about alcohol because you just had the Elk Grove Cares. Uh I just want to mention, I know we've talked in the past about Oktoberfest that we're holding out, hope that we'll be able to hold it. Um we're still looking at plans and trying to figure out uh how we could do it with uh uh the current distancing uh. Again, we're hoping we can do it. We have to run things by the state and that, but uh we'll have to make an announcement uh the next August board meeting and uh we'll be deciding by then. So I know people have come up to me and asked if we were still planning on doing it. So we're holding out hope, but uh we just need to make sure that we can do it. I think we can do it safely, but we have to have it approved by uh the state. So uh keep your fingers crossed. We hope to have at least one event happen this year. Uh try to get the people together, but we have to do it safely. So we'll know more in August.
And if we have it, we have a special surprise on Saturday night.
We do. And I know you really want that surprise.
You missed it.
And it's got something to do with the last weekend, but.
Especially after what went through on the Fourth of July.
We have a lot of fireworks sitting around, so uh hopefully we'll be able to pull it off.
Thank you. Um trustee Fichter.
I would like to announce tonight the winners of the Community Character Coalition one thousand dollar scholarship. Uh the students that participated in this scholarship competition um had to put in applications that primarily looked at their leadership in the community. What have they done in the community? What positions have they held to help the community? And then secondly, we looked at, and these were equal value, what leadership have they shown in their high school? And then we looked at, but for a much lesser value in terms of the points that we were giving to them. Uh we looked at things like their essay that they did on citizenship and then academics. A lot of scholarships look at things like academics as the primary thing. And we don't, we look at what they do in the community. Uh our former fire chief Dave Miller chaired the committee, I was part of it, there were several others part of it. Uh there were hard decisions to make. These kids did a great job, and I'd like to read their names now. Tara Valentino from Saint Viator. She is going to Saint Mary's in Indiana and to uh major in business, marketing, and Italian. Abigail Hanley from Conan High School is going to Saint Louis University to major in occupational therapy. David Gora from Elk Grove High School is going to Harper and he's looking at engineering. Kaylee Riddle from Elk Grove High School is going to Purdue and will be majoring in aerospace engineering. And the last one would be Matthew McCuria uh from Conan High School who's going to Iowa State University and is undecided on a major right now. And I haven't asked George about any of these, what their mascots were. I don't know if he knows Saint Mary's.
I don't know Saint Mary's. Saint Louis is the Billikens, Harper is the Hawks, Purdue is the Boilermakers, and Iowa State are the Cyclones.
Very good, okay.
And you just pulled that right off the top of your head.
Yeah.
What about Saint Mary's? That's what I'm waiting for.
We had a Saint Mary's once, I believe.
There's a bunch of them though. There's, there's one in Minnesota, there's.
So this is the one at Notre Dame in Indiana.
Yeah.
Anyway, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Well, then Mr. Nigwakker, sit down and think. Uh trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. Uh I just wanted to mention that
Yeah.
Jim and uh yeah Irene and Jim Morella, thank you, uh of the Flag Lady donated all the flags that the Public Works Department were able to put out. A big thank you to them. Uh I also now want to tell you about the annual Frank Zarnik, Jim Heffron Memorial Scholarship golf outing. It's Friday, August seventh at Fox Run. It's a little different because of the restrictions that we are in place. Pre-registration is a must because there will be assigned tee times. The cost is ninety dollars and that includes the tee time starting at eight AM with subsequent times at fifteen-minute uh intervals. Four-man scramble tournament, individual golf carts with some exceptions, box lunch, but wait, there's more. Three mulligans per golfer, the magic string per foursome, buy a drive uh for the courses, two par five holes plus our regular games. Prizes will be awarded and the opportunity to win a new car complements of Woody Buick. So you just call Fox Run, eight four seven, two two eight, three five four four to sign up. There's also information out of our website, zarnikgolf.com. This is the only way we re-raise funds for the scholarship program to benefit our students' future. So please help us to continue this thirteen-year tradition. And that completes my report.
Thank you. And George, it's three mulligans per round, not per hole.
Thank you.
I'll make sure, I'll make sure. Okay, trustee listener.
Thank you, Mayor. This morning, I had scheduled a week or so ago to have uh two, well, actually, I didn't know how many people were coming out, but uh two people came out from Siemens to install the new water meter. And it really was uh, it really was great. They came. Uh they were scheduled between ten and noon. I was hoping they were going to get around ten, they showed up around eleven. But they were done in about a half an hour. They spent fifteen minutes in the house, down in the crawl space. Well, one guy went down the crawl space and ten minutes outside. They actually changed that little box outside, that little black one, and now it's a gray one. I mean, maybe the different colors. I'm not sure how anything works. There were no instructions, so I can't play around with it yet. I'm anxious to see if I can see my water meter usage uh every day. But that's coming out, that's being worked on by a committee. But uh I just want to tell people when they're looking for uh, when they are scheduled for it, it's pretty smooth. And they do show IDs when they show up and it's the gentleman thought they were about forty-five to fifty percent complete for the village, so um it's going along. I know this is one of your reports, Nancy, but I just wanted to bring that up. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee listener. Trustee Schmidt.
I really don't have a report to, report tonight, but I'd just like to, since trustee Procton was in there, to remind everybody to uh uh support the uh farmer's market. It's on Saturday mornings over here at the village hall parking lot, and please come out and uh and uh for fresh fruits and vegetables and uh support our vendors.
Thank you. Uh we move on to accounts payable warrant. Our first one is June thirtieth, two thousand, or twenty twenty.
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant for June thirtieth, twenty twenty in the amount of four million, four hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and thirty-six cents.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee listener. Lori, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Fichter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee listener?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
That wasn't a very enthusiastic I down there at the end there.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, good I. I always follow yes, so it's hard to remember and say aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. We have then account payable warrant for July seventh, twenty twenty?
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant for July seventh, twenty twenty in the amount of two million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seventy-three dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee listener. Without objection, record the votes demonstrated, five to nothing. Now we move on to consent agenda items tonight. We have a pretty thick consent agenda. It's only been three weeks. Wait till our next one, it's going to be almost what, five or five weeks till our next meeting? So um with that, we have items A as in apple through D as in.
D?
DD.
DD, I mean, DD, I'm trying to think, wait a minute.
Definitely diligent.
Definitely diligent. Who is that character that's got DD name?
DD?
Abner Double Day?
That's an A.
That's an A.
Daffy Duck.
Daffy Duck, that's who it is. Wait a minute, this way, why rival? Abner Double Day, that's one word, Double Day.
So?
That's getting close to uh uh who's, xylophone, we're getting close, Double Day is two.
Has a made free.
Um, so I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee listener. Trustee, if staff any questions on the consent agenda tonight? And with the audience on consent agenda, without objection, record the votes demonstrated, five to nothing. Regular agenda items tonight, I gotta do Mr. Rommel's work now. Um. Oh, we have the annexation for the Jiffy Lube. Uh, what do we need to do tonight?
You can approve it, um luckily, or you can take one at a time, the resolution fifty-eight twenty first, on the order that's thirty-six seventy second.
Okay, why don't we take them one at a time? First, let's approve resolution number fifty-eight dash twenty. Father Mayor Clerk execute pre-annexation agreement between Elk Grove Village Designation Property Owners to be next in, the village at CNR Oakton Higgins, Inc. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee uh Zarnik, a second by, I'm going to give it to trustee Fichter because he's more enthusiastic out of his. And without objection, or should I ever call the roll?
Uh, ever call the roll, you vote too, just in case.
Just in case what?
There's a, there's a plurality, plurality needed on the annexation. I think five will do it, but I would prefer it to you vote as well.
Wow, Mr. Nigwakker's doing a lot of legal work tonight. Oh, he's on, he's on his A game. Okay, Lori, we please call the roll, include the mayor, please?
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee listener?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Fichter?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson.
If I vote no, I can wreck the plurality, couldn't I?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Okay, I'll say aye. And then the next one is ordinance number three six seven oh, next scene. We're now annexing and rezoning the property in Elk Grove Village of CNR Oakton Higgins. That'd be, what would they be zoned as?
Coming in as B three.
B three, okay. Um can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Zarnik. I'll give it to second trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie this time.
Hey.
Lori, call the roll, please include the mayor.
Trustee listener?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Fichter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Well, according to village attorney, now I do not have to vote this time, am I correct?
Correct.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Positive?
Yes.
Positive?
Yes.
Okay. Then you don't have to vote. Okay. Wow. George, we gotta give you a bonus after tonight. Way to go. Good job. Oh, see? Trustee Feichter seconded it. Okay. Plant Commission. Any items up, Mr. Romo? Okay. So, no items on plant commission? zoning board? No items on the zoning board's appeal? Where Mr. Perrin, when we need him, say zoning board?
Of approval.
Of approval, yeah.
Youth Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
We announced our, sorry. I don't like this. He's in my seat, you know. We announced the winner of our scholarships last board meeting, but we are thinking of possibly holding a team bonfire in October also, so we're gonna have to see how that goes. But I think we can definitely social distance that. So, that is about the only thing. We couldn't do our splash parties this summer, obviously. Rainville Falls is closed, but we are still trying to pull something out for the end of the year. So, keep listening. We'll announce probably maybe in August if we can do it. So, that's...
It's made a hot enough fire to burn the virus away.
It is. Yeah, it probably will. But hopefully by October, things will be better. So...
Well, thank you.
That's all I have.
Business Leaders Forum, trustee listener.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee that's been investigating the installing of 5G network through the business park and the Beister Field corridor has met three times since our last meeting. These have all been meetings online using Zoom, and they're going quite well. Three companies have been interviewed, and there's another meeting scheduled later this month to talk about the, how they did. It's a very challenging subject right now because it seems like we're really ahead of the game right now. There aren't many people doing it. In fact, one of the presenters was pretty much telling us we have it already. I think they're calling 4G, 5G, but I don't think they'll do too well. But anyway, that was one thing. The monthly class, master class for enclave is scheduled for July 15th, and it's titled, "The Revenue Pipeline Repair," which is timely with this whole virus thing we've been fighting. And there's also two more Makers Wanted workshops scheduled for the 14th and 28th. All these will be online using Zoom. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, trustee listener. Cable Television Committee, trustee listener.
Thank you again, Mayor. In our SNI report, I don't know if it was last week or one before, but Comcast Xfinity users, we'll begin three new channels shortly, I think by the end of this month. One of them is Recipe TV, which you can figure out what that one's about. The other is Justice Central, which I'm sure George is glad to hear about. And the other one is Comedy TV. If you're interested in finding out more about these channels ahead of time, if you go to their website, one is recipe.tv, the other one is justicecentral.tv, and the other one's comedy.tv. So, they look interesting based on their websites. And also, an app I wasn't really familiar with. I heard about it. It's called Spotify. I guess it's for music. It's now available as one of the apps on the Xfinity X1 box, so I had to play around with it. I got it installed. It was a little difficult, but now I can hear music on my TV, which has lovely speakers. But anyway, and that concludes our cable report.
Thank you, trustee listener. Health and Community Services, trustee Nancy Zarnik.
Thank you. There's a blood drive for Saturday, July 11th, 8:00 a.m. till noon in the lower level of the Zetic, Charles Zetic Municipal Building. Blood supplies are really low, so please donate if you can. This is something that really helps so many people. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Information Committee, trustee listener.
Thank you again, Mayor. Just a reminder, our new website is really packed with information. Hopefully, if you have the time to get to look at it, you'll see things like this Saturday, July 11th, is the annual Salt Creek Cleanup. I think this was, I don't know when it started. It must be 15 years or so.
Long time.
Maybe longer.
Longer.
Anyway, yeah, it probably is longer. And the cleanup is being handled by Boy Scout Troop 95, and the person that started this event, Nick Nicola, who I know quite well, is, will be leading the troop out there. If you're interested in volunteering, you could still get involved by calling Nick Nicola at 847-828-1141, or send it an email to, here it comes, creekguy@att.net. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And trustee Zarnik, I heard you saying, people are nervous. They don't have to be nervous about donating blood. They take all the precautions in the world. It's safe. You don't get sick. You can't get coronavirus. You're fine. So, yeah, people, please, you gotta donate. That's deadly shortage.
We're very, yeah, it's something that we really need right now.
Especially the harder type bloods to get. So...
And they're testing for Corona antibodies when they do the testing now.
So, that's good.
And so, that's real good. You'll be notified if they get positive on that.
Right. Okay. Recycling and Waste Committee, trustee Feichter.
Oh, yes. We have some things this time to talk about with recycling. A few months ago, I announced that we were going to begin a textile recycling program. And I thought that was such a great idea, and I was really happy because we were gonna begin it, I believe, in March. And what happened is, as you all know, the virus hit, and we, the program was put off, and put off, and put off. And now it's starting to resume again. I understand some of the suburbs, it has started, but they had already had the program operating. So, they just had to restart it. We still have to start it from scratch, and we, we'll be going ahead this fall. It will be going again, the textile recycling program. That means people will be getting information right at their door with a bag to put clothing in, and shoes, and belts, and anything else they wanna. And it'll be picked up if they want to, once a week, or they can do it once a month, or once a year, or not at all. It's their free choice. But that program's going to affect, what people really love in Elk Grove is our document destruction and electronic recycling. We always get enormous numbers of people for that, and that'll be August 29th. So, be watching out in your newsletters and other information about the document destruction and electronic recycling at the Public Works Facility. And then, I think it's September 12th, that Saturday, we'll be doing the paint and motor oil recycling program, and that'll be again at the Public Works Facility. And we just approved money for that tonight in our, in our agenda, and it's a very good program. We, the first year we did it, we just had unbelievable amounts of people show up for it. I don't think we'll have quite as many now, but we'll still have a lot of people that this is a good way, safe way, getting rid of paint that you have that you don't know what to do with, especially oil-based paint. Okay? And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feichter. Great Committee, trustee Zarnik.
The 2020 parade has been canceled due to the constraints we've run under, but let's look forward to 2021, next year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
No report.
JPZ Committee, trustee Proctor's not here. Any members have any report? Nope. Seeing none, hearing none. Capital Improvements Committee, trustee Zarnik.
As the mayor said, we've got a lot going on. Work has been begun on the Beister Field Meacham Road pedestrian improvement project, and that consists of sidewalk and ADA ramp improvements, signal modifications, and the addition of internally illuminated street name signs at four intersections along Meacham Road. Roadway pavement removal on Vermont Drive, Gibson, Newberry, and Julie Drive was completed. New asphalt pavement is being replaced, and this project's schedule should be completed by October. Concrete work on the Wildwood and Charing Cross areas continues. Work in the Ruskin area will begin as well as continue on the second, what?
It has begun.
Oh, it has begun. On the second sides of the Wildwood and Charing Cross areas. After all the concrete work is completed, roadway patching and repaving will take place, and this product, project is scheduled to be completed by the end of August. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Airport update. There's nothing important now. We are still, although, working on the Fly Quiet Program, Midsummer Concert Classic Series, again, not occurring this year, but we got the Beach Boys still coming next year, Mr. Knickerbocker. Now, you know what's funny is, they're celebrating the 50th anniversary next year.
Wow.
The Beach Boys?
Yeah, the Beach Boys. So, interesting. You never know what may happen. Never know who might be joining, Mr. Mike Love.
Ooh.
Fifty or sixty, which one?
It's gotta be sixty.
Yeah, it wouldn't be 1970, 60th then. Might be the 60th anniversary.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
Makes sense.
Well, maybe fifty, I don't know. I'll find out. I know they're celebrating a big one. Still not doing some kind of special tour. I know, I heard that. So, we'll see. But they are coming to Elk Grove, if that's what counts.
Go ahead.
No, oh, special, next special event won't be until either Oktoberfest, or we have the tree lighting, hopefully. Keep our fingers crossed. We have not set up a band for that yet. We're waiting to see what happens before we pick one, or if we can have it. So, one way that we'll be lighting those trees all the, lighting the lights the day after Thanksgiving. I promise you that. No liquor report tonight? Report from village manager out in the gallery.
No report this evening?
No report. Village clerk?
I do want to say mail-in, mail-in applications are available on Cook County's website. We have a link on the village website for you to access that form to fill out. You can submit it online, or you can print and mail it to Cook County. Also, Elk Grove will be an early voting site again. I just got a confirmation today. We're looking to possibly use room E.
Yes.
Next to the, you know, the other room was room D, so this will be the room right next to it for early voting.
Much bigger.
So that we can do social distancing, and we'll have, we'll try and make it one way in and one way out so that people can keep their distance, keep it safe. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Knickerbocker, take a look. Nothing? Okay. Village attorneys all taken care of, and finished business. New business items. Any trustees have new business items tonight? Mr. Franklin?
No, but I was just thinking, will we be having any kind of meetings down in E during the election, that we would have a conflict?
No, because we'll be, well, first off, our meetings can go back to the conference room by then.
Okay.
So, we'll be safe that way.
And usually they start later, ours start later.
Yeah, but they still have the poll.
Yeah, they, no, we wouldn't be able to use that room.
Well, that's right.
We can't get anywhere near the voting machines.
Well, but wait a minute. They can leave all the voting machines in there for a meeting. Give us something to do while we're sitting there.
We are in Cook County, you know.
So, now, we'll make, we'll make sure we can work around. If we have to do anything, we always got in our room, the downstairs room, A, B, C.
That's true.
Yeah.
So, we have that available. Okay. Anything else? Feeling good now, Mr. Frankie?
Ah, I feel somewhat better.
We got y'all fired up earlier. That was good.
Hey, you know, you bring out the best in me.
I enjoy that.
It's a sidewalk, sir.
Okay. Mr. Petzel, first off, glad to see you. You doing good?
Excellent, Mr. Mayor.
So glad to hear that, isn't it?
Yes.
We missed that for the last four months.
Mr. Petzel, now, we've noticed over the past couple meetings that our viewership has climbed dramatically. Our Nielsen ratings are off the charts. We're now in a multi-billion number instead of just a billion, and we're hearing through the grapevine that since Mr. Knickerbocker's not up here next to me, that's helped our viewership. What do you think of that philosophy, Mr. Petzel?
I think you should vote on that.
Oh, no, no, no.
How quickly they turn.
Excellent, Mr. Petzel, that idea. We would take that under advisement. Well, look at it. Next meeting. If you see Noah sitting up here next meeting, yep, you know how the vote went.
Welcome back, Paul. It's good to see you.
And our friends out there, now, am I still scheduled for October? I know I missed April. Are you guys having your meetings yet?
I hope so. I was seeing a certain source all by my email today, September 8th, so I hope October for you will be okay. We'll be talking about that later.
Okay. Well, we're glad everything's getting back to normal.
I am, too.
And doing good. Glad to see you two here. I was gonna say smiling face, but I'm sure they're smiling underneath. Glad to have you here.
I'm glad to be back.
It's almost normal now.
Yeah, and see all the department heads here? That's good.
Well, normally, they're back here by us, so we don't get to see them.
Always nice to see them in the meeting.
They really miss coming here.
Oh, that's true. They are back.
I imagine they're all depressed that they haven't been here. That's right. You see all the smiles? Oh, they got masks. I can't see them all.
Yes, and they don't have the gym bottoms on when they're doing video conferences.
Yeah. Mayor, do you all hear? Your department's still quite busy.
Yes, we are.
So, it's going well out there in Business Park. That we like to hear. Okay. We talked to our friends back there already. Mr. Rob will stick around for you. I think that's everyone covered. Our fine officers out there doing a great job, as always. Okay. Anything else before we adjourn? Now, remember, we will not be back for five weeks until, they would make it, August.
But we had that special meeting here.
Yeah, we had the special meeting a week from Thursday. I'm thinking next board meeting.
Fourteenth?
August 10th?
11.
14th? No, because you got three extra days. August 11th.
11.
We have next meeting. So, we'll see all then. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Feichter, second by trustee listener. Lori, call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Zarnik?
Yes.
Trustee Feichter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Before I say yes, I think it's August 13th.
Okay, August 13th.
So, just to clarify, that's a Tuesday.
No, I don't think you're right.
Oh, wrong ear?
Well, I'm thinking, today's July 7th. Take away three days, because it's 31 days. That makes it July.
I wouldn't say there'd be a math question.
It's August 11th. Yeah.
It's August 11th.
Yes.
Okay. We'll, we go back upstairs and we live that discussion we had before, because obviously he makes mistakes, so...
You know what? I was looking at a calendar that my insurance got me.
Oh, no, my Johnson Church calendar.
It's a Johnson calendar.
No, discounted.
There it is, Johnson calendar.
I hear late.
They're discounted. No, no, they're discounted. They're discounted. It's close enough. Okay. Lori, did you call the roll?
Did he say?
He did. I said yes.
Yes.
Trustee listener?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, passes five to nothing. Folks, enjoy the summer. We're getting back to normal. God bless.
Everybody said yes today.
We're seeing five weeks, meeting, adjourn.
Catching on.